And, cool, we're going. Okay, so we start with a roll call. Oh, sorry, y'all. No, you're fine, you're fine.
Brian?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
John?
Here.
Deb?
Alright, so, I need to look at the agenda. Alright, on paper?
Hi.
Alright, great, so now we are in our little work session here, thank you all. So, I think we've been talking about this a lot, it's no surprise, you saw the document. The goal for, from my perspective, this meeting is to get a consistent, no, to get a shared understanding of what we want to produce as some information, let's call that, that we're gonna pass on to the incoming board. I sent out the doc, it was a Google Doc, you also got it, your package is a PDF. I really, I think you had made an edit to it, I don't know, I haven't looked at the history of this to see if other people have edited this, and I, thank you, oh, perfect, okay, so it's up there, when I'm editing it, it'll actually like be reflected up there, it'll be pretty straightforward, I don't know how much time we need to spend, I think if we're pretty devoted to this, we could be outta here in an hour, right?
I'm devoted.
Perfect, no, I mean, this is, I think we've all been talking about these ideas, I don't think any of this stuff is new, or whatever, and so I think it's listed in this document, I think that there's kinda like four big topics. One is, the first one is role as a school board member, I'll just review these and then we'll get into them. The role of a school board member, I think that there's a lot of IASB resources there, but the specific one is like their, what they need to be doing in the three to five year group anyone. The next one is gonna be collaboration and communication within the board, how do we talk with each other, what have we learned the last couple of years? And I think Tyler, you wrote really well, and I don't know if it's an email to everybody or if it was just to me, but I just copied and pasted it right in here and said, like, there's this natural sort of like resetting that's happening every two years with new people coming in, like, hey, how do we kinda bust beyond, how do we move beyond that? I think Tyler, you said it well there. I think then there's some very specific things that we have done, so the other one's kinda like meta topics, and that's specific things we have done that we have focused on, and then the last one, which I think was a great addition, is sort of, how do we think about committees and engaging the community for particular, you know, specifically diving into things that we don't have the time to, or it's not right for us to dive into what we do on patrons and community members helping out in this area, so. I think also there's this sort of like resources and reading section that I think that we can continue to expand, so, trying to think what's the most productive way to go through this, let's maybe start, do you have any comments so far on this? Okay, so.
Outcome expectation is the document that we'd say this is gonna be shared, that we're creating?
Yes.
A line on, is that?
Not from, so this meeting would just be like, is this outline complete? What are the specific things you wanna hit? And then Deb and I will-
Fill it, fill it.
Create outline and send it around, and we can work it out from there. So the first one, let's just work through this first one, I think it's pretty straightforward, the role as a school board member, so what is their role? Like, at what level do they interact with the patrons, with the superintendent, with the staff here, with the administrative team? I would say that the majority of that IASB handles really well, and I think that we should, again, like, relate to some things, but I also don't think that we need to be real, like, that's not a place where we should spend much energy, right? I think the one exception might be reinforcing that three to five year priority part, like, hey, when you think about what you're doing in the school district, it's really setting those priorities, making sure the finances are, you know, sound for the future, writing policy, and then, you know, you're responsible for one employee here, so I think those are like, if I talk to people, those are the big four.
I would fully agree that, you know, it's up to the new board member to dive in and spend some time on IASB stuff, I mean, there's a great, very long, but a very great document there, right?
Yeah.
So, be encouraging them to use that. The one thing that I think could be in this first section, but maybe it's meant to be in the second section or beyond, is I think each board, and this one in particular, needs to be clear on what the expectation's for, how communication goes with the community, and I think that's been a source of conflict in the past, so I think that would be good for clarity, and a few years ago, we tried to really establish a chain of command, right? And how that communication goes, and so that's, that's something that's not necessarily in the IASB, but it's, it's because all board members do that, I mean, they get contacted by the community, okay, how do we handle that? How do we as a group agree we're gonna handle that?
Yeah.
What are our expectations for communication about that? And if it's, if it's, probably the most important thing for me a few years ago was if it's, we're gonna turn it right back to the staff, you know, okay, if you haven't talked to the teacher, well, for heaven's sakes, go to the teacher, if you haven't, if you've done that, like, you haven't gone to the principal, go to the principal, if you haven't done that, go to the superintendent. The thing that seemed to be missing to me as a board member in that chain of command communication was, give me a, give me just, I don't need to know what, what the specifics were, but let me know that it was addressed. So, so if something comes to the board, what's the expectation for the communication?
Yeah.
Both from the board member to the patron that came to you, but also, in most cases, that's gonna go right back into the staff, it's from the staff back to let the board member go, hey, here's how that went, you know, I did talk to him, it's resolved, or it's being escalated, or whatever, 'cause if you, if you follow that chain of command, you as a board member need to know it got resolved somehow.
And like, I like what you said about that, it's not that we're interested in exact, or privy to the details of it, but just the fact that it done. So, when you run into that community member later on, you were not caught like unaware
Nothing ever happened.
Yeah, you know, hey, listen, for especially, I think too, like, just, it's full circle, maybe there's gonna be a delay you didn't know about, just helps you, it looks like we're all on the same page, that's the spirit, I think that.
So Tyler, I heard you say that, right, like ideally, ideally the board member is informed that there's conversation happening?
I think, I think that'll be a touchy thing, and I agree with everything you said, but a lot of, when I was a new board member, I expected that when I would call John with something, that he would call me back and he would tell me about it, and I, now that I've evolved into more of a hands-off board member, like you said, I just wanna know that it was addressed?
Yep.
I don't want the details, and I think it's very important for somebody new to not get caught up in all-
Managing.
Right, right.
I think you said it great, the one time you said, you know, remember, we don't manage it.
We set policy.
We set policy, we don't manage.
And the biggest experience I had was, that was really challenging for me, and I think we got through it alright, but it was that we had a couple of members who had said they had gone to the superintendent and now they wanted to talk to me.
Yeah.
And so then I sent out that communication that, hey, I'm gonna be talking to these people, and I'm just gonna listen, and then what I told them is, well, if you wanna make it an agenda item, make it an agenda item, or if you wanna meet individually with board members, I encourage you to do that, but there was one where they, they wouldn't stop.
Right.
And so then I, at that point in time, I had to be a good listener, I directed them, redirected, and then at that point in time, I'm like, well, I'm gonna listen, and so that was one that was, was very much different, but I just, just said, well, it ain't gonna hurt to listen, but that, and but when I met with them, then I was telling them the same things, is I don't manage the school.
Yeah, and that's a good piece to add in, is that, you know, it's fine to be listeners, but we're not fixers.
Right.
You know, we are one of five, and-
So, maybe in the document, not tonight, but as the document gets put together, we could have some redacted, some examples in there even, right? Some of them are simple, right? Well, have you, have you gone to the teacher, have you gone to the principal, right? Pretty simple, but even then, you want, as a board member, to hear from that teacher, that principal, or, right, just go, okay, it was resolved, right?
Yeah.
And in the case where they're not gonna stop, well, that's a little different, right? So you gotta kinda help put a little bit of pause in it before it comes to the board, but ultimately, you've got, you've just gotta say, hey, well then, come to the board meeting, right? That's your prerogative, if you've gone up the chain, that's your prerogative.
Right.
But, let's get, let's not just come, it's not gonna be productive if you just come in here blazing.
Right.
Let's have a couple conversations so we understand what it is, right?
Yeah, and then the timing for the agenda too, because it has a way of, okay, it's all blown up the day before the meeting, and so, you know, we don't want any of that, it's like, you gotta run it on the agenda just like it's supposed to go, and that tends to be a calming influence too, because if it's important, it'll be important 30 days from now.
Yeah, sometimes it just needs a-
Hmm.
What did you say, I think you said something urgency and-
Yeah. Urgent, important?
Yeah, it's different, but you get complated a lot, yeah. Yeah.
I like it, you know, one thing too, like with this, so we still have the convention, not convention, what is that, conference, is that, it's usually in November, but-
Oh, the annual convention.
Yeah, usually it's in November, and I think these will be just new board members, will they-
Well, not necessarily, but they wouldn't-
Usually it's the con- convention, and the elections are the fifth.
Yeah, like, they will just-
So we have a board meeting, like, if that convention's on a Thursday, Friday, a board meeting's on Monday, most likely.
And if some ways that's good, because I think they do some of it, but in some ways, and it's also like, isn't there an introductory one too, that you-
There's a Wednesday that's, that's really good for new members, and so it's almost like, I think the candidates that are running need to know that, hey, you get to pull up the next week. Next Wednesday you're gonna be here, and Thursday you're gonna be here.
Yeah, they should block it.
It just, it just starts your swim.
It does.
Even if, even if you don't know, but boy, of all of the things educational wise.
Yeah.
That's a great topic.
It's just hands down, I mean, it's just very great.
It used to be there was a couple months between, but this will be like, in some ways that's good, if they reserve it as a ground running.
November 20th and 21st, I think that's a little later, maybe a little bit later.
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Well, Thanksgiving is there, Thanksgiving's the last Thursday, I mean, Thanksgiving is like another, that next week, so.
I'm guessing that it's intentional with the election moving to November.
So you might even, I think we're all saying, just put in there, set expectation for the candidates, the expectation to attend, right? Have that Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
The Friday's usually the president superintendent.
And even that, you know, for whosever is the president, that's very, very helpful. Those Fridays were really good.
That's one of those conferences that is actually very, I don't know, I've been there twice, but-
So I, I mean, other than the IASB resources, the communication to me is something that the board, I think, needs to have alignment on.
Right, just be, and the whole, all the rules associated with, with how you can communicate.
I wasn't just gonna say that.
Keeping the transparency, and all that, that's a little bit tricky for a new board member.
Usually that, usually Drew comes, says to me that night, and he gives this spiel about what you can't, can't do, I don't wanna be redundant, I don't wanna, but we have meeting ceremony cadence and expectations, there is something to be said for just that general.
I just think have that link-
You can do FYI's, but you only have-
For meetings, yeah, whatever that-
It takes a while to get used to that.
Whatever the best English version we can have of transparency, transparency, yeah, transparency's important.
How do you collaborate, it's a trick to learn how to collaborate, and I think it's like that.
It's very important to have a female communication, because that, that crosses the line, not crosses the line, it mirrors the line, or what like-
You can easily cross over a line and-
Yeah, alls you have to, you know, here's the issue.
Yeah.
Just don't, just say, well-
No, no conversation.
Right, you just don't say what you think about it, but this is the issue we're gonna have to address, and I think that right, fine.
Yeah.
Yep.
So anything else around this, like, I mean, these to me are, my, the communication even still, like, these are not Gilbert specific.
Right.
No, right.
I think we have a particular way that we like to communicate with the community, I think is very good, talk about the chain of command, but these are not necessarily Gilbert specific here.
That I learned, that chain of command was what they talked about, like the first, that first meeting at IASB.
And keep, yeah, it doesn't apply to our patrons though, I mean, we have to communicate it to them, we can't expect them to know it.
Yeah, right, right.
So sometimes, sometimes I got the feeling of, that-
Hey, good, I got you.
People outside the school were, well, that's not the chain of command, well, no, no, you know, so, so our outside communication of the chain of command is, 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 yeah, I'm very, you know, we certainly wanna resolve your issue, but, but here's, here's step one, here's step two.
Or it may not even be a, you know, contentious issue, it's, I've got one person I think of, every time I see her, I got another one for your list, I go, fine, it's not my list though, oh, that one I would take to, you know, Mr. Nelson, oh, that one I would take, right?
Right.
I'll listen, but, so I think that is, it is, IASB certainly puts some nice ditches, but the more that, for a new member, you can give examples, and as a group of five, including the superintendent, business manager, and administrative team, we agree on how this goes, because it is two-way.
And it does, it'll save a lot of stress to a new board member, I mean, I think we did some good work, like, the groundwork on how we communicate goes, it got less stressful at the long run.
And it's very difficult to look at a person and say, I appreciate your concerns, but this needs to go here, because they just want to vent.
Well, they want you to fix it.
And you can, yeah, and you can get filled up, and, and they know that we're hardened, and we don't, I mean, not that we're hardened, we listen, but we're not gonna fix, and it's hard for a new board member, you got attacked, didn't you, your first-
No, I don't mean like a devil, I mean, I think I was like, I, I think I just had two months before I went to the board meeting, to that convention, yeah. You know, you just have to, once you get it, it's fine, it's not always a, like, chain of command, I think Tyler said this, it's not always escalating, issues like, sometimes people just have ideas, I get that all the time, why can't we do this, let's do this, why can't we do that?
Right.
So how do you get your-
Oh, here, yeah, oh, there.
Right, like, what's your, what's your way, how do you get that, so that the right people hear it, you know, sometimes it's that too, so. I like, I, I think that's good, I like that, how do we-
So on the four areas, role as a school board member, collaboration, communication within the board, then we had, what's the number three?
Specific goals, policies, accomplishments, milestones that we've been excited about as a board, and then the last one is these committees.
Yeah.
Is that, that was what I, I'm just a-
Yeah, and I, and I love that.
Yeah.
So back to the number one, would, do we, do we put three to five year priorities there, or does that actually fit number three?
I was a little, I was a little not, I wasn't quite sure why we called that out, that's all, I wanted to just maybe-
It's critical, but I put it at the top of your list for number three.
Yeah, okay, I think that, I think that fits well.
Well, was there like another, was there another angle, you were gonna take, oh, okay.
Again, I mean, the IASB will cover this, like, what are your roles as a board member, right?
That's one of the big, most important ones, I gotcha.
I think that's fine. Okay, so, let's move to number two, the collaboration and communication within the board, and I think, really, I, I think Tyler said it well, like, framing it this way, like, how do we set expectations for how we communicate with each other around respect and trust, but also around like, shoot, what is it, like, yeah, kinda like, moving to the place where it's like, okay, great, I know you're telling me this, but let me, let me take a few years to figure it out, well, like, if you do that, you're just slipping backwards instead of making progress on some of these things, now, not all of the things, but I think in general, yeah, how, how do we, and, and I, actually, I think this document is a good advancement of this already, but, or could be if we do this right, but are there other attributes or aspects here that we wanna talk about? How do we communicate this?
I kinda would look to you two to help there, right? So, two years ago, four years ago.
Yeah.
And, you know, what you think would have helped you to onboard quicker, and you're not talking about onboarding necessarily as much as, how do you get the board alignment quicker, right? I mean, at least that's how I take that one, 'cause it was just in pig barns last two days, it took a bunch of people that'd never been in pig jockmas before, starting off on the jockmas floor, here we go. And when you mix pigs, it's, I mean, it's a fruit basket upset, right? I mean, they, they have a pecking order, right?
Oh, okay.
And, and the three guys that I took that had never been in pig barns before on the way home are going, it's just like humans, and I was going, yeah, it is, so you get a new board member, you get two new board members, you guys are gonna have three new board members, right? So this one I take is more of the dynamics, right? And, and I think if I were to say something, but I really wanna hear it from you, I would say, as a current board member, I would like the respect of the incoming board members to go, you've got something that I can learn from, as opposed to, I'm coming in and I got, I got an agenda, or I've got an issue, right? And it's not that, but, believe me, I'm not the, well, this is the way we do things around here, kinda personally, so that's why I'm saying no status quo, but there's still that dynamics, and so, what would you guys say would help get to that point quicker?
I would say, like, for myself, for recent experience from this, I do view that this document goes a long way, because it is a message from the board. I, I know it was very, I struggled because I got different things from different people, there was not a, you know, so different people would say, maybe even describe the same situation differently, and so as a new person, you're left not sure what to do, and you do kind of just try to wing it yourself, you know, but so the fact that we have this document of what was agreed upon, what we do, it's, I think that's a big step. It's, that's hard, 'cause you do feel a little bit like you're jostled, you know?
I feel like timing is to your advantage this particular year, with the election and then the convention right away, and, and you have that opportunity to have social time with them right away, you know, if, if you plan it, and you set the stage ahead of time, and we notify them, and you have dinner, and, and, you know, maybe it's just, okay, we've gone through all of this, let's, you two sit back and let them ask questions, let them, let them just flow and become more of a team, because typically, election happens, and everybody's thrown right into meetings, and it's just business, and you don't have a social time, not that it's social time, but it's a, it's an informal time.
I mean, it's building trust, it's building relationships, right?
Yeah.
And that's really hard with open meeting law.
Yeah.
So I remember, maybe my first or second year, we did a retreat, which you go, oh my gosh, you can do a retreat, you can do a retreat.
As long as you don't discuss it.
Right, 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 right. So, you know, it's, yeah, I mean, would that have helped you guys if it had been, you know, not just, okay, now we're having a work session, and it's this, boom, 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 now it's this, and more of a retreat setting?
Yeah.
I mean, Deb, you said it well, like, this, the first, well, she probably the first like year and a half or so, you're, you're so underlawned, you're like, oh my gosh, what are we talking about, like, remind me about school finance again, like, what is the superintendent's role here, I mean, like, you were just over, I feel like everything's over your head, and so-
But it's doable, right? I mean, speaking to the camera and tell it can, it's doable.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you definitely do it, no, it is, but I think what happened is-
You're the law.
It's, it's a good experience. Yeah, it's, oh man, it's probably the biggest professional development experience I've had in the last four years, is doing, is being on this board, so I think, yeah, there's huge rewards, and you're shaping the future of the school, totally big rewards. What I'm saying is, it's, it's easy to, it's hard to filter out the noise and the signal in those first year, because everything is new, but not everything is important, right? And so, how to filter that out, so I think the one thing I would love to see, and I think we're doing this work now, is like, here are the five things that we wanna work on as a board together, there's gonna be three work sessions, we're gonna cover it this way, and at the end, here's what we wanna get out of it, so, come to this work session, we're talking about this, here's what it'll look like five years ago, here's, we're gonna work on this and build a new one, okay, and the following month, or, you know, three months later, whatever it is, here, we're gonna have another work session, we're working on this document, here's the expectation for what it is, or, you know, so that's one, one way to do it, the other thing is what we do at work, is almost have like a board buddy, you know, like, we have a good developer buddy, so when you're brand new, you have a person that you could always contact if you have questions about things, they're not telling you how to do your job, but they're kinda the person you know you can ask, so you don't have to feel stupid by like raising your hand.
Because it's set up that way.
Right.
Now, I don't know how that works here, because we are all still individuals, you know, and so, that kinda goes back to what you're saying, is how do you not have four different voices telling someone to do something, and so I don't know if that like, board buddy thing works.
But I think, you know, we talked about communication up in the, in the last one, and perhaps part of that is, if you have questions about this, you know, if you have questions about finance, Gail's your resource.
I was just gonna say, absolutely.
You know, I mean, like, like a contact list, if you have questions about policy, you know, Lindsay has, has a great working knowledge on policy, if you have questions about board interactions, you know, John or Deb, we just need to give them that directive, and maybe they don't have their one-on-one, but they know who to contact for what question.
Well, we have a document for new employees.
Yeah.
Who do you go to, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
When you need this, you go to this person, you know, for a new person, and it is, so it'd be no different, but on a smaller scale, but-
And I think as you develop out to that fourth topic on committees, well, then there's more go-to people, right? So you don't know, have to know everything, but you have to know who to go to.
Yeah.
And it would probably be helpful for Deb and I just to get some coffees on the docket, to, you know, hit each of the new three people a couple of times.
Yeah.
To develop those relationships, and then they can ask you the questions that they have, and that kinda thing too, so I, I think-
You did that with, I mean, as, as president, he would, you know, call, and I did appreciate that, because John would be like, listen, I'm just, I'm just, what questions do you have, you know, what do we go over, it was, it was nice.
You're developing trust and building relationship of, hey, if, if we ever need to have coffee, go to a cafadium and-
So-
That's the only proof place, by the way.
So, yes, yes, would it, but would it be worthwhile with so many of us leaving, to have an opportunity where the candidates, where we had a posted meeting, and the five of us were there, and the candidates could come in and ask questions? I mean, like, and, and it's not that you two aren't capable, 'cause you're more than capable, but just-
I'm talking post-election, though, is what I'm talking.
Right, and so I'm thinking, you know, if you could bring in all the candidates once they, once they filed, and they had an opportunity just to ask questions, because with three new board members, there's the opportunity for you two to get a lot of, to have a lot of interaction with them after the election.
Oh, I'm all, you know, I'm all for, you know, you guys carrying the load pre-election.
We can help, you know.
I think that'd be fair.
Oh, I just got that, yeah, I thought you meant everyone.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, and it makes a lot of sense to me, post, even, even for, well, I guess you'll be in California, but even post, even though we're not on the board, we can still, you know, talk about that, have a session, and, right? Pre-election, quite honestly, I have a little concern, depends on if there's just three people running, well, that's what it is, right? But if there's six or seven people running, and then that becomes a little bit of a political session, then, then-
Oh, I was just thinking.
I know, I know, but, right? So then this topic comes up, and it's, oh, oh, you're gonna change the district alignment, or, you know, so I-
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
So, I, I wouldn't dismiss a retreat, I mean, in this, you know, post-election stuff.
Taylor Hill Lodge.
Taylor Hill Lodge, there you go, it's only an hour and a half, hour forty-five minutes.
Is that a whole day thing?
And Cook's, and Cook's breakfast, a good breakfast, right?
When you did your retreats within, like, a couple-
We just, I only remember one, we did it Saturday morning, and we went to a conference room, somebody had arranged in Ames right across from the cafe.
Yeah.
But, you know, that, even that was a little hard, right? Because you're gonna have to be really clear on the open meetings law, you know, so, this isn't about strategies, it's about relationships, this is about how you, how you work together, right? Which is what I'm taking number two is, is how do you work together?
Yeah, and you just did that, like, really-
We had an outside facilitator, is that a recall?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you have a facilitator? You think too, if you had somebody maybe from, you know, AEA, or from the school, that they could help navigate, to make sure, you know, the agenda didn't breach over into something that you shouldn't, you know, somebody who's just, for someone who's just like, like, you know, but I don't-
There's lots of resources, you know, out there, um, you know, I S B, there's two nice little clues.
Comfortable of.
Like one-minute video, I don't think I, yeah, they have their, ISGAS has like one-minute videos. The topic is.
Yeah.
And it's really kind of nice because it's not a lot of investment, you can just, it's like, ooh, I got, took this away from that. Or, there's some great resources.
Yeah.
And you just have to let them know where they're at.
And maybe that's, you know, you know, is this, right, is this to kind of roll those out to them, right? Because it would seem to me if you kind of had, if you kind of had a.
Like a curriculum or.
Uh, like a video that rolls out with each, with each board packet.
Plan, yeah, a plan.
Just, just something of, it, it's overwhelming when, when I gotta watch twenty links or read twenty links. But if, but if I get, if I get a video and a link once a month with my board packet, well now I'm not so overwhelmed. You know, it's like, okay, here's, we would always put on our, our agendas as an educational topic. Now, this is a little different than that, but, but I was just thinking of a way.
It's not bad.
To kind of build it into your routine, so, and obviously that would fall off and change as, as they have a year or two of experience.
Yeah, but it might be a good idea that first year to have.
Educational topic on agenda.
Beginning of every meeting.
You could make it somewhat like, you know, relevant to, like when, before Travis goes. Have some videos about the finance or.
And if we did that for a year, then we could regroup and say, and then we could expand outside of that of, hey, the educational topic is going to be about, you know, something that's important to, to you and Lindsay Gail. You'd be like, okay, this is something important that we should have up to speed and it's.
I agree with that idea actually.
Fibers tend to, and then that way, we got to shorten down some of the stuff that, that we don't need to discuss. You know, so we compress other parts of the BD so that we have more time for that, but.
And for me, some pretty weird stuff.
Right.
Is that good?
Yeah, I think we're good. Let's move on to the third one. I think this is the one I really want to make sure we're pretty buttoned up on, or like unified. The third one, third one, specific goals. Um, and I, and I'll just say, I, these, while these are ordered, I don't think they're in any specific order, but I think these are things in the last four years, I've specifically seen the board become both, we've spent time here and especially last year, we came unified on these things. How do we, so what are the three to five-year priorities, but also how do we set, how do we define the three to five-year priorities? You know, the existing goals, these, these, these board members are going to make sure they're supporting the admin team to accomplish, or resourcing them, I should say, superintendent eval process. Again, I'm probably the least knowledgeable school finance person at this table, but like there's certain signals and goals that we have here that are indicators, I should say, goals that we have. You know, what are, what's important for the, for the school board members to know, right?
Just thinking back, that was a little dicey there for a while too, wasn't it, Gail?
Well, but you know, it all.
Worked out.
It all circles around.
Yeah.
And it'll, you know, eventually, you know, hopefully we don't have to come back into that. But, you know, it, it's, it's life, you know, you come full circle and you have to say, you know, I've been here before.
Kind of what to expect are like, how do you?
Yeah. Well, we're in a good spot now, so.
Yeah.
Um, are there, yes, a portrait of a graduate, um, I think there's, I, I don't know, educational initiatives, do we want to holler at that or not? At least keep those out, maybe yes.
The only thing, this is just my opinion about that, like I, can you go a little bit higher, Gail? Sorry, thank you. Um, I love all of those, I'm going to get down to the educational initiatives. Um, well, one, I just think, I worry that it's a little bit, like almost if we put everything in there, I think it kind of gets to be too much. Not that I don't think we're unanimous and all of that, but, um.
Yeah.
I just felt like, I really liked A through G, but I felt less, um, like yay about the others, that's all.
I feel that would be, again, I came on the board when there was thirty-seven thousand acronyms and we changed our initiative.
Oh, yeah.
Every single year, right? And not only did we change our initiative, but we changed our curriculum at the same time. And I think that with, um, the, with our commitment to, um, PBLs, not PBLs. Good call, PLCs, and then that evolved into AIW and all of those things.
Speaking of acronyms.
Yeah, exactly.
At least I know the acronym.
I think it would be very beneficial to include within this something from, um, a history from Kerry.
And that, so before you type it in here, I think that actually fits in number one.
Sure, yep.
Okay.
But I, I think it takes the place of, of what we were just talking about. I think that, that for the new board members to buy in to what we've committed to, um, I think it's very important for them to know where we have come from. And that, that we really have, our, our curriculum director and the board has made a commitment to not willy-nilly just jumping on things, but we're building on.
The evolution.
Yeah, and, and I think that history is important.
And, and especially as it gets to, this is what we're doing today.
Right.
So that you start, it's almost like that's, it's a whole nother training session, but it's, it is the acronyms, it is for the purpose of the board being aware and knowledgeable about it, but not managing it.
Right.
And especially not being expected to, well, where should we go next? Well.
Right.
I'm the volunteer here.
Right.
I'm not in education.
Yeah.
Right?
I really do like it in section one.
The core values of a portrait of a graduate and these.
Yeah.
These priorities and how are we.
You come to us with what you think fits.
Yeah.
Based on those, right?
Yes, yeah.
I think, I like that idea, and I, but I like it there.
Yeah, I like it up there. I think that makes a ton of sense.
And I choose Kerry because I feel that it's, that's her job.
Yep, absolutely. And she can talk all together.
Right.
And it wouldn't hurt though, I think, to include the superintendent though.
Okay, absolutely.
Right, because that's where there's the bridge. But again, getting back to the communication part, well, that's, the superintendent is the bridge for pretty much everything that the board does.
Right.
Yeah, I think that is helpful. That, I would say, that is one thing that, um, I think, well, we lose a lot, you know, in, in November, when you guys are no longer on there, but that history is difficult to piece together. So when we have that available, I like it there and I think, like the way you said it came, to me, because it, when it was down below, it just felt like we had a hundred different things going on at one time. And that more being historical, showing that evolution, that this is where we're at now, I like it.
And I've never viewed it as, that's a board activity, right, or that's a board responsibility. We are there to understand, knowledgeable of it and resource it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And as Kim said, not, not switch it every year.
And understand how it rolls up into our three to five-year priorities, right? I mean, I think that's a big piece of it too, right?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. I'm just not feeling with this. Okay, so moving back up to number three, number three here. Are there, oh, I, yeah, so are there things that are missing and then also like, I think it's important that we specifically talk about the superintendent's goals, which you emailed out last week, right? Yep, um, and then also, or sorry, shared last week and then also, um, the state of the superintendent's contract. And I think that that's, I don't know how to say that stuff, but that is something that the new board needs to be aware of.
Right, before we move on, I think, I think we need to get rid of G. Where we have a graduate is included up above, well, it's not.
Because we're not, because that's not to Tyler, and to your point, that's more about the, we're disinformed or knowledgeable enough, gotcha.
Yep, so, um.
Yeah, I'd include in the private documents, I mean, the, the challenge with the superintendent evaluation is, it is private, it is closed session and this group right here is the only one aware of it, right? And yet decisions are made that others see the decisions, but they don't know that. When they become a board member, they should be privy to that, so I would put that on the list too, which is the previous couple of years of evaluations, just so that they know what that looks like. And be, and be, be transparent about that. Now, given, now they're on the board and it's their, up, their responsibility to do the evaluation going forward, but I mean, that's, that's part of this transition is.
You know.
You come in new and if, if you ignore everything that's been done in the past, it's exactly what we talked about, where now you're starting over ground zero. So I, to me, it's, it's previous evaluations are in there.
How do we, so I totally agree, the, the worry I have is like, how do we still let them out on any of these topics, right? Their own autonomy, they're not bound to the decisions we've made, right? So like, I think that part is important to go like, hey, here's where we've been and that's probably how you two.
It's informative.
Yeah.
That's all this, all this is, right?
No, I. You don't check your, you don't check your decision-making, but you will try to make informed decision-making based on.
This is about onboarding, right? So we want you to know what, where this board has been and where the previous board's intentions were for going, what direction, right? And, and that's, that's the most you can do.
And Gail, you know, probably most legally about us, but what's happened in closed sessions with previous boards is fine to bring into closed sessions with new boards?
Okay, so.
Is that, that's the question, I think.
Yeah, closed session, that closed session is closed, the only people can, that can have that information for the closed session is the people that are in the closed session. Anybody that was outside of the closed session, so if there was a member absent, they cannot even listen to the closed session.
Okay.
But a, but a superintendent's evaluation.
Not the meeting.
Not the meeting, but the document.
That has to be available to a, a school board member.
I, I, I can't answer that right now.
So, all right, I'll just.
I have to check on that.
The evaluation itself is part of this file.
Right, but there's a personnel, you know? Yeah, there's a, the, so, like, a contract with B T.
Yeah.
Sorry, so this contract is open document, some of the, and personnel items within that is, are not.
Okay, I can.
I can't answer that right now. Make sure we're doing what's right and wrong. Yeah, not.
This is, I think documents that we provide to Lindsay after his evaluation should be, we should be able to pass those forward.
Definitely.
Because they, they include more than just three goals, you know, three sentences, they, they includes the background. So we have to be able to give them some information, we have to.
Particularly with the, you know, what the next year's goals are, right? And I think that would be critical for them to do the evaluation.
Yeah.
A year from now, right?
Well, my opinion, all of it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So Gail, you can figure out what we can and cannot legally do, okay?
Yep.
When it comes to a personnel file.
When I change, I'm thinking about it, like when I change leaders at Burke, I would expect that my new leader has information about me.
From your old, I mean.
I don't want to start over every time.
First thing you do.
I don't know, but I don't know.
When I evaluate, it's.
But a lot of it's, yeah, but it's also, but true, that evaluation is based off of what that you saw, yeah. There's, there's.
So in D, do we, I don't know how much detail, but part of the facility planning to me that it, it's new right now, I guess we could ask whether everybody's in alignment with. I, I think that the construction management approach has gone really well, right? And so that's something that I think's important that this board would say, that's, that's important for this district to go forward with that approach as opposed to the general contractor that we've done in the past, right?
Yeah.
So that would be something that, well, the new board can change, right? But this board, the experience, the experience was very positive, right?
And you've seen both, I mean, you and Kim have seen both, so you, you have something to compare it to. So when I got on, we were just done.
Yeah.
With the high school, so I didn't get in on any of the, the other, so I, I think your guys' opinion is the most important that you saw both ways.
Yeah, it's night day from my opinion.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Serving as president when we were finishing up the construction of the high school and a general contractor and getting pulled into stuff that I was like, holy cow, why do I have to worry about the cracks in the parking lot? But I better be at that meeting.
Right.
And in this case, Story as our construction manager is just taking care of things, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, that, that to me is important.
Well, I think that, that the elementary school kind of being next up on the block is kind of important too, right?
Yeah.
I, yeah, so, well, I think that's.
I think that should not be, I think that would maybe be a long run.
Facilities is a long run.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, just move it from separated.
The relationship with Hala.
What's that called?
Oh, yeah.
You know, that should be something that, I think that's a discussion point.
But to me, I think the important part, I, I was not so much involved in the Hala piece of it, the backend. But to me, like, I think it's worth calling out the construction management approach because that approach in general is so, I think, been so positive. Where to me, like with Hala, I'm just an architect, sorry, is it an approach or is it just?
Well, that's a selection of an architect.
It's just a selection of architects, so I don't know necessarily about how important that is, but I like the construction.
But John Hala meeting with all these groups for that tenure plan.
The focus.
I think it's the procedure.
Critical to the success.
And then the architect firm.
I think that's what, you know what I mean?
But he had the gift to, to do that.
Right.
I still, I still believe it's a process more than, I think, construction manager, I think Story's done an exceptional job, but I think it's the process that's been good, just like the process.
We wouldn't say you, Story, we would say you should definitely get a construction manager, we can have you as Story, same, right? Like the longer.
Well, I guess that, that's my question is how much detail? Because if I were to sit here today and I'll do it right into the camera, I'd say, no, it's construction management and I don't know why we would change from Story, they have been overly impressive. Architect, you have to have an architect, but I'm sitting here today because of where John was going, I think, is John Hala's no longer there. And I'm not so sure that, shouldn't shop out for architect next time.
But my point more was being the, the guy like John Hala saying, what are the needs of the district?
Again, the process.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the process is critical.
But I'm talking before the architect.
Next time we say, not we, because it may be you, but, but, but it's, it's obvious to them that it's important that we go out and we talk to every group.
There's engagement, especially.
But an outside facilitator, just like we did with the three to five-year plan. So the, the key that made John successful was he was outside and knew how to work with those people. So I agree that it's process, Kim, but it's not only the process, it's who does it.
Sure, right.
The DLR didn't do that.
Right, right.
They just didn't do it.
I was just nervous about like promoting one company.
Yeah.
But that's, but that's the board's responsibility.
It is, but I, but you know, they can, why wouldn't you pick it? Well, you might not pick it if their cost is so out of line. There's lots of reasons, but I love what that we pick, if we're looking for what we all agree on, I think we all agree on that the outside facilitation was key, community stakeup was key. The construction management, having someone else who's an expert overseeing that was key.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, really to, to get all those.
And use him as an example to say, John Hala.
Fantastic, yeah.
Met with everybody, I'd maybe call him out as a person.
Did you hear, you had that opinion, Gail, with that process went really well?
Yeah, we have the plan, you know, we have this facility plan, it doesn't matter, it's a plan, so at some point, we need to revisit it. And, but the, the work is there, it started, it's just now we're moving forward with, so they need to know that there is a plan. You know, and to move forward and.
And it'll keep me nutty because we're adding, you know, thirty, forty, fifty students a year and it doesn't stop.
Yeah. All right, so do we want to call out any specific things around sort of what we were thinking for the elementary school? Not the specific plan, sorry, but like, hey, the next big bond pass is most likely going to be towards an elementary school.
I think we should.
I, and I would, I would put that as long-range plan, uh, anticipates elementary schools, the next big project, right? So, so I, I would emphasize the long-range plan.
Yeah, yeah.
There is one in that, then that is pointing towards an elementary school.
Yeah, and that, our research said that it was best to, you know, just put it right beside where we're at and obviously got to be able to under-tell a fish when we get to it, but that's where we're at, you know, and into, and then from what we knew.
What did we, do we have a date for when we thought we would need an elementary school? And I know we do, but I can't remember well, it's all enrollment-based, right?
Yeah.
And enrollment in the elementary is flat.
I've only, yeah, I've only, I always hear the date, just talking, when Travis is talking about when you could, you know, like.
But Hala said it was good for another ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty twenty kind of been. I thought it was twenty twenty.
Yeah, and that was, that was starting seventeen, eighteen, so I mean.
Twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, towards the end of the, into the twenties, we better, we better have our us.
Well, and if enrollment stays where it is, the work we're doing this summer will make it a much better place for a long time, so.
Yeah.
I still haven't been in there since we got the new secure entry cheese, okay?
That's why.
I know, exactly. Not true, okay, so.
You can.
Okay, I think we, I think we're good, John and Gail, I'll probably work with you on the other back here for the financial goals and the indicators what's important.
Yeah.
Um, I could, I could use help with that. Okay, so, um, the next one, and yeah, thank you Deb for adding, this is around the, um, committees. I think there are, I, again, I broke it down into temporary, long-range, um, geez, let's move these around a bit, it'll make sense. I, I think communication was possibly a temporary one as we spun up an app and a website, uh, because we don't meet as a, as a committee anymore, I mean, really. Um, I think Amy ran it a few times after Chris left, but really the bulk of. I think Amy ran it a few times after Chris left, but really the bulk of the work was done, and so I think maybe this one.
I was just gonna say, I kind of like it, but I like it maybe with some different, maybe with a different approach to it, like just the thing.
I mean, if you put this on there, then the board is gonna be, sorry, we're not making policy here, but if we say this now, then I think that we're obligated to work on doing it, right?
And then it should have a charter, okay, this is the charter of the communications committee, so that if you're on the communications committee, you understand what your role is, so we don't get into management.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so, so I, you know, I think that.
Does this one scare, so I get that this scare, I'm thinking when I say communication, I'm thinking of like, how do you look at your website? Like, not website, but like, is it doing other ways we should communicate with about?
I mean, when we started it, yeah, when we started it, it was around, there's a couple of really like poignant problems the district had or like miscommunications they had. So it was like, okay, how do we address that? So we had a communication plan for, but I have some bad things, I don't want to get it all over, there's like, here's how we communicate through email, here's how we think about website, here's how we build an app, here's how we, we interact with, there's a whole bunch of stuff, and I think we kind of like checked it all off, accomplished it over a two-year span, and then there's just like, ugh. To your point, what's the charter, like, what is the purpose of this? We kind of did it all, and it's fine, I think there's value in keeping that going, but it needs to be re-chartered.
It should probably, in my mind, unless we're looking at revamping the website, it should be like the health committee or like the CTE committee. Something that meets twice a year to look at, evaluate and suggest changes.
The scary part for me is, is we really don't have someone that's in charge of communication.
Ultimately.
For this size, and so, so I really see this is, this is really the fill-in until we actually fund a communications director or whatever, whatever you, you call it, I don't know how many schools our size don't have somebody that's responsible for.
Right.
And maybe that's why, maybe having it a temporary, I think the stalled out was the part that I was like, oh, I think there's still some, maybe it is temporary.
But I believe it's very much an issue for us.
Oh, yeah.
Without someone who's assigned to the communication.
But, so, I really appreciate you bringing this up, Deb, and putting it on there, and you and I talked a little bit about it, because to me, the district has grown up. I mean, just since I've been on the board, the district has grown up to the point where if you go to the convention in November and talk to most of the other schools our size or bigger, they have very functional committees, which help make the meetings, the general meetings, go that much more streamlined because work is done outside of the board meeting and brought forth, usually with the board member that's on that committee, but also outside patrons and staff members with a recommendation.
And that's where the trust builds and it's all like when Tyler was doing all of the work on the ten-year building plan, I'm like, I was president then, I'm like, okay, that's, that's you, you come tell us what your thing is, but I don't want to relive it.
We're kind of defeated in purpose.
Well, you gotta kind of trust, those things, and you try to get it to people's strengths. And so that would be another thing for our incoming members is to find their strengths and match them up with the committee that that, that goes the best with.
And, and so the things that Deb and I visited on a couple of weeks ago were, to me, this has an opportunity to be a development ground for new board members.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It is also an opportunity for an exit for old board members to still contribute, but not be on the board table. So for example, I'd be very interested in serving facilities.
Which I think provides us a huge leverage for continuity, you know the folks that were involved in the first go around.
But, but I would agree with John, the thing that we've, I mean, to me, it felt like the closest we came was the facility process the last two years. But even then, it's kind of slipped and, you know, it's kind of, we're not doing that that we did for about six, nine months really intensely, where superintendent, myself, and, you know, we were meeting and then bringing things, right? And you saw that at the last meeting where all of a sudden the art goes, well, let's have a work session to talk about the tech center. Now, that's not the process that we had in place, because now it just brings it all to the board. Not that you shouldn't be aware, but you don't want to be in a work session.
No, I know, you're right.
So the thing that's missing still, that this board now could help, and then what we're saying to the new board, I think, is formalize this, all of this number four, formalize it so that there's expectations, as John said, a charter, who's involved, that there's expectations for how frequently you meet and what you bring to the board. And personally, I think that it would be great if there were, as John says, somebody from the board on each one of those committees. May not have to, but, and you say, well, that's what I'm most interested in, or that's an area where, that's my wheelhouse in finance or whatever. But, but that's something that we, the district has grown up enough that we're at that point where we really need that as a five-member board to, to have streamlined meetings and work through a lot of information and yet bring it in a trusting way to a board to make decisions.
So to give an example of that, what that would look like is for like, if I were on the finance, we would go over all the things that we go through at the school board meeting, but the only thing that would make our agenda would just be, okay, here's the summary and whatever we need to be, I will code. Because it would be, it would be Gail saying, here's the summary, and I'd be like, yeah, we went over all those numbers and it all looks good, no concerns from a.
You would still have access to everything that's in the consent agenda, and if you had a question on a bill or something, great, but you'd say, great. And it's, but it's not just John and Gail, you'd have, you know, that's.
Other than, other.
You have a committee of four people, and by the way, one of them is somebody that might be thinking of running for a school board in two years or four years.
And you want enough that you got a quorum without you having to always try and scruff up with time that everybody keeps together. I mean, a working board of five is pretty tough to get.
I was, I'm used to the previous school I was at, we had a member, seven member board, and so we worked, our committees worked all the time. And they, you know, they went and they brought things to the board, it worked well, it worked well, but that was a seven-member board. And, but it, it works smooth when you have.
I think it's, I think the key is like clear expectations, right? This is what is expected of you, this is maybe what, if you were to, did you have situations where you felt like, well, this rises above what I, I think this has to go to the board, you know? So just being able to kind of understand and lay that out so people are clear, this is what, this is what I just, we just received and I'm just FYI in the board.
Generally, you have committee meeting reports of.
Yeah. Reports, right, but like.
You just have like agenda, and here's the reports of the committee, and then they can all be consented in this, if there's anything that needs action.
We have on the.
As long as they have written.
And that could just be part of the board, the board is an update on, you know, did anybody met lately and was the updates?
A written board report would be really cool, right? So they, a small, just small, but.
Well, yeah, I like all this, so this section, we feel good about, you're, I think Deb, or you and John should really write this section. Because one, this is a little bit of a change from what we've done, I think we've flirted with it or done a good job on some of it, not on all of it. But yeah, what do you want to set up for the expectations for incoming board around policy stuff? I'm sorry, I'm right, sorry.
Policies.
Yeah, committees.
I totally, I get that, I totally get that, like, I'm happy to like to try to run it, but I think it's not just John and I that get to decide, we're still a board, right?
This would just be what we're communicating to the next board.
I understood, but I mean, but it's not like just John and I, I do think that we all decide.
But I agree that, that it should be your vision, you have to carry forward the next two years.
Because we haven't done, we, right, we've done it a little bit with communication, pretty well with the long range planning things, moderate at policy. We've done, times we've done good, times we haven't.
We've never fallen behind.
Okay, no, no, I mean, we've never been illegal, you're right, but like, there's times when we dive into policy in the meeting when we could have issued a report, right? So, I would say we haven't necessarily, this isn't, we aren't strong in this now, we want to get stronger, that's why I think that you two should really be the voice of it.
Sure, yeah, sure. I mean, this whole, this whole thing is going to be reviewed by everybody, so it's not like we're just coming up and.
Yep, I do think the portrait of a graduate doesn't need to be there as a temporary committee, I really believe that that's being driven by staff, and I think that they're asking for help. I like that the three to five year, I guess I would say priorities, that they just keep it in the back of their mind, that it should be. The process that we did this year, I, I felt went very well, and so they should just kind of keep it in there.
And I don't know that I would separate out, because when you then start having temporary and long running, then there's confusion and then things stall out because.
Your charter would tell you how many times.
Yeah, your charter, so, so it means, I would think that three to five would be on the list, but it might only meet once a year until you get out two or three years from now, and then you go, okay, now we're gonna.
Now you're kicking in.
Yeah, kick it in, right? And facilities, you know, could be the same thing, well, we get through this current one, well, it might be a once a year deal where you just, as you had before, well, you look at enrollment, you look at, you know, what's going on, but facilities, for example, would also be, well, what are we doing with the land that's south of the current high school campus? And do we want to engage in buying that, that we have first rights or refuse, do we want access to more, right? I mean, long range stuff.
Because that's coming up in twenty, just.
Can you look that up? I had a question on that, if we sign.
On that before.
Oh, yeah.
So, did you want, just to clarify about this, for that section four, did you want us to write the onboarding part, or do you want us to write charters for all of them?
I don't think you should write charters.
Okay, that's what I was like, just the onboarding part, right?
What committees?
Yeah, okay, gotcha. I was, but at first I thought, I think you guys, I think we have to as a board decide on that, but got it, just that a charter should be required, we got you. I'm with you, sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
It's been a long day, sorry.
Okay.
Really like that, I really like this layout.
It's above the right time.
Are there big things we're missing? Oh, is it?
It's a different document.
So we have an option on, is it sixteen acres?
I think that's what's left, we bought four, but we're just looking up how long that current agreement is.
I never even did, I think it's.
Well, now, find that out.
Yeah.
There are things we're missing on here, I think I've spoken privately with almost all of you before this, either intentionally or just.
It's a good start.
I think this will be.
It is.
So I mean, the goal then is that before the July meeting, that we have this formed into kind of a written thing with some links out to other places. It's, never needs to be, I don't think it needs to be an action item to take action on, but I would like to, before I leave, move this into like a written thing, I just outlines that we can work on, and then whatever sort of weight becomes the packet part for future board members is up to you all.
I think we should have a motion though of what we approve, so that at least if next year's board member says, you know.
What is this?
What gives us any authority?
Yeah.
That we unanimously voted for it in board meeting would give the document.
Document.
Yeah, this is, this is the communication that we would like to give to the incoming board, that's all it would need to say.
Well, and we have policies, don't we have board, I mean, I know we do, we have policies that pertain to responsibilities of board members and board member. I don't think we have a board member orientation, do we?
There might be a policy on that.
But this should absolutely become a part of that, I think we should revisit the policy and, and make onboarding.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, you're, you're really just saying, here's kind of the state of the district.
Yeah.
But I mean, if we already have a policy, let's like show how important this is and revisit the policy and attach this as, as an R1, you know?
So, there was one.
It's a little different too, when you have three board members going up versus one.
Absolutely, I mean, you have a voting majority coming in, right? And like, keep movement happening of course, and keeping that, like, letting them have their voice, repeat an informed voice, like, really important.
I need to get.
Oh, so you asked a question as well, well, you know, you did email out the superintendent's.
Oh, yeah.
Goals, and without bringing those up, because they're not public, right? I don't want to talk about that specific goals, but there is some overlap here, right?
Yeah.
And that's something I think you and I may want to work on there.
Yeah.
And I don't think that this fits in any of those categories, this is board to board, right?
Yeah, I agree, I just want to make sure that we can clearly articulate what, what's left, do you think?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would love to see, you know, it'd be interesting to have a simultaneous document like this that would come, that could come from a superintendent and say, here's how I would like to relate with you, here's how I'd like to bring things up to you, you know, here's sort of, here's how I'm going to be talking with you, right? I mean, I don't know how, it's, I don't know if it's as detailed as this, honestly, because I'm not in that role, so I don't doubt.
No, that's all that I wanted, just to make sure that it was clear, right? Because we say that and then there's like.
Somebody provides something in there where we have his goals, he can create whatever he wants.
No, yeah, I, I, I think it's, I think it's, the board's responsible for this, and I think the superintendent's responsible for that, and then.
Yeah.
So, we're holding ourselves accountable to this.
I really do like that idea, I wonder if he'd be open to that. It's kind of like a here, what to expect.
Are there, are there anything else that we want to talk about before we adjourn?
Well, the, I don't know if it's been decided, but, so at the July meeting, we'll select a candidate? Because you, you asked about when to put a deadline for folks that are interested, right?
I chose July tenth, which is the ones that before the board package goes out. I did want to bring up, I think the one other thing that we, whoever we, there's ten days we have to, they have to be sworn in.
Within ten days?
So if they're not going to be at the July meeting, you know, if, whatever transpires July tenth, you know, if we have somebody, if they cannot be at the July tenth meeting, I would say we better not appoint them. And then we wait until the August meeting to make sure they're there because we have the ten days.
Couldn't we, couldn't we have discussion on the fifteenth and then reach out to that person? And, you know, maybe two parts, months to bring them up to speed so that when they land and we appoint them on August, maybe they've got some.
They just have to be present whenever you appoint them, it's essentially.
Right.
That's the only other timeline, I, I just wondered you guys if you were aware of that.
I went ahead and reached out to the only candidate that we all know that's running, and that candidate will be there on July fifteenth. I won't be, but they will be, so if that ends up being.
What do you?
Well, and I guess my, my only hesitation is that all of a sudden we would get five or six people who throw their hat in the ring, you know, and we have to have discussion.
You're gonna have to have discussion.
Right, yeah.
Well, and that leads me, right now, it's right here on what's going on. And do you want me to take this any further? Do you want me to put it out any further?
Well, I think.
I think so.
You think so?
But what is that?
Yeah, like where?
I mean, is it, is it a text?
Yeah.
Oh, like a last text, a last.
Yeah, we can put it on Twitter.
I don't think any one of us wants to be, we don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable that we just like.
Yeah.
Someone, right? Though, though like Tyler said, there is one person that has said, I'm gonna run, so it wouldn't be a wrong choice.
It was too moral, I mean, it's like.
That's what I'm, I mean, it's up to you, I'm not gonna be there July fifteenth, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but to me, don't make it harder than it has to be.
Right.
This has been posted, anybody that's would already know, right? But now you've made it on the website, if you want to send out a push text, fine, but.
Our meeting's available, these are all here brightly.
Yeah.
If you know, you know.
And keep in mind, okay, five people come forward, okay, what are their credentials, what is their activity, what is their, what's, I mean, I'm assuming it'd be selective based upon, well, how engaged have you been to have a running start in here? Well, I'm struggling with who's gonna have more. So, I'm saying on the camera, I already know who I would appoint based upon what we know today. But I, I fully support that you make everyone aware. And again, I stated at the general board meeting, if it's just, if it was just one position in November, well, I probably approaches very differently.
Right.
But there's three, and what this, everything we talked about the last hour and fifteen minutes is continuity. With you leaving early, well, and to me, we need, we do that.
Faster we get it, the better.
Faster we get it, the better, so why delay? Have that person, a board member in August.
Yep.
So, that's, so that was the other thing I thought we should talk about and.
I already have a tentative agenda, kind of, because everybody's schedules are so crazy now, so I have a tentative agenda. So on there, I do have a possible resignation, and then I also have an agenda item to appoint, and then I have the election of the president and vice president. I'm assuming that we want to do that, so that's on the July.